Okay, I'd like to call this meeting in New York City Council in order. Autumn, please call the rule.
Mr. Cost.
Here.
Mrs. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Murmy.
Here.
Mr. Raff.
Here.
Mr. Roletta.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
And Mr. Buck.
Here.
We have all present and accounted for this evening. Next on the agenda, we have the invocation by Mrs. Floyd. Please stand.
Put your bow your heads, please. Almighty God, we thank you for this opportunity to be here. We thank you as spring comes to us and we see flowers growing. And we ask that you be with our students who are going to be out and about more and that people pay more attention as they're driving through town, to be careful for young people who are out and about. In this week or in this month of March, being Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, we ask that you be with those people and with everyone else to understand them. We ask tonight that you be with Jimmy McKeachan, known as Crazy Jimmy and his family as he's fighting stage four lung cancer. It's a difficult thing for him, but there are many people in our community who are suffering, who have illness and death to deal with, and we ask that you be with them. We ask that you be with us tonight as we make decisions regarding the city of Newark. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Floyd, do you want to start the pledge for me?
Yes. Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, we have caucus. That's a time for council to discuss anything that may pertain to the agenda this evening. Do we have anything? Next, we have the minutes of our March 7, 2016 meeting. Is there a motion to approve those? Question by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Cost. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. That passes. Thank you. We have two appointments this evening. Actually, this is not an appointment. This is just a reappointment of William Bill Mann and Jeff Anderson to the Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council upon recommendation, work model of development director. Again, these are just a reappointment. They've already been appointed for a term before this one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. That passes. Ten zero. Thank you. We have five reports this evening of standing committees, one from finance, one from service, one from street, one from economic development, and one from safety. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Under reports of city officials tonight, first, we have none. Then, under communications, we have Mayor Hall with a proclamation.
Sure.
Mayor?
Jason, if you'll join me up front, please. I'd like to welcome Jason Unstat. St. Stott? I'm sorry, Stott, correct? Okay. He's the new superintendent, and I will say new because you're in your first year, of Lincoln County Board of DD and fill in the shoes of the little feet of Nancy Neely, I would say, kind of being funny, but doing a great job, and we welcome him here as I am going to present him with a proclamation. Whereas people with developmental disabilities, their families, friends, neighbors, and coworkers, encourage everyone to focus on the abilities of all people. The most effective way to increase this awareness is through everyone's active participation in community activities and the openness to learn and acknowledge each person's contribution. Policies must be developed, attitudes shaped, and opportunities offered for citizens with developmental disabilities to live as independently and productively as possible in our community. We encourage all citizens to support opportunities for people with developmental disabilities that include full access to education, housing, employment, and recreational activities. Now therefore, I, Jeff Hall, mayor of the great city of Newark, hereby proclaim the month of March 2016 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Newark, Ohio, and offer full support to efforts that assist people with developmental disabilities to make choices that enable them to live successful lives and realize their full potential. Thank you very much.
Do you want to say what two words you're trying to walk into, Jason?
Stand here. Stand right over there, Jason, so we can get you on the thing here. Sure.
You know, for those of you that don't know me yet, I always come prepared, just in case, and I usually have two versions, just in case.
You did say a few words.
It's just a few words. But on behalf of the Lincoln County Board of Developmental Disabilities, I want to thank the citizens of Newark, Mayor Hall, council, for this proclamation recognizing March as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. The continued support that we receive from the citizens of Newark, businesses, and local entities provide opportunities for people with developmental disabilities so they can clearly demonstrate their skills and strength, which leads to the valuable contribution each person adds to the community they call home. With this said, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, back to communications. We have one from David Green, and we have a flyer about the meeting last week at the library, and we have about eight emails asking council to keep our brief, specific legislation. And that's on the first reading tonight, so that won't be very long for a couple weeks. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have a public hearing. First, we're going to go ahead and we're going to open the public hearing now, which we will open the public hearing. This is the time for you to give comments, pros or con. I'm going to have Autumn go ahead and read the public hearing first, and then I'll try to do a summary, and then we'll go from there.
I'd like to take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Newark City Council on Monday, March 21 in council chambers at 40 West Main Street, and it's to consider ordinance 16-01. It's an ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 173, 175 Elmwood Avenue, City of Newark, Lincoln County, Ohio, from that of single-family residence, RH, high-density district, to NFR, multifamily residence district.
Thank you, Autumn. Mr. Rhodes is here. I'm going to try to give you a quick summary of what this is, and please correct me because I'm probably not going to get this correct. This property is 173, 175 Elmwood. It is currently zoned as a single-family, RH, high-density. The owner is asking to go to multifamily. My understanding is now it is a grandfather duplex. It does have two addresses. Currently, under our zoning code, if you have, you can have four non-related folks living in a single-family residence. I know the property maintenance, I believe, says three, so I think Brian Moorhead is going to be coming to council to fix that little discrepancy there in the next couple weeks or month. So my understanding is he can have four folks that are not related, living in a single-family housing. So if it's a duplex, he could have four on one side, four on the other side, as long as he had enough square footage. That's my understanding of where we are right now. The Planning Commission Director Rhodes has denied this and suggested that he get a two-family, go to a two-family district in order to match the current use of the property. So who would like to speak at this public hearing? Ma'am, if I'd ask, if you'd just come up so we can hear you okay, and if you'd just give your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name's Natalie Cost. My address is 3436 Johnstown Utica Road, Utica, 43080. I am the owner of 173 and 175 Elmwood, and from my understanding of what the property is described as, it's exactly what you said it was. And it is a current legal, non-conforming use of a duplex. And according to Article VII, it can be continued to be used as such. So it's already a duplex, so it would house the eight people that you're saying. We're asking for two more people to be housed. This is to address the homeless issue, the housing issue that we have in Lincoln County. We work closely with BHP. We've placed quite a few people in our units through their agency, Behavioral Health Professionals. Coalition of Housing, they operate very closely with us as well. St. Vincent de Paul, we work with them very closely as well. All of our tenants are screened very thoroughly. It's drug-free, alcohol-free residents. I'm on the premises every day of each boarding unit, each boarding house that we have. We want to bring more boarding houses to the city of Newark to help with the homeless issue that we have here. But it is a great need. It is a great need in this community. And, you know, we can, we've went out on outreach, you know, to invite people to church and things, and we've done that downtown here. Unfortunately, we've come across quite a few homeless people. And one experience my husband had and another gentleman from our church had is the gentleman told him, said, "I'm homeless. I'm contemplating on going and hurting someone, so I'll just be put in jail so I'll have a place to sleep tonight." That's really sad, and that's really unfortunate. And we firmly believe in giving people second chances. That's what we're about. If they want a second chance, I'm willing to work with people to house them and to help them get on their feet. And there's actually four people that have been placed with us through these agencies. They're now working and being productive in society and off the streets and off the drugs. They're in rehab, and they're doing really well. And I do understand the concern for the residents on Elmwood Avenue. It's not a good area, and that is a concern of ours as well when we thought about doing a boarding house in that area because of the trouble that is already there. And with that said, we do take very, very special precaution in who we rent to. We don't rent to just anyone or anything. And again, I am on the properties, and so I'm just, I'm asking that we would not have to go to have it rezoned as multifamily because it already is zoned. It's grandfathered in, but technically it's zoned as single. So I can still operate with four on one side and four on the other side legally, but I'm asking for two more units in there so that we can house more people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for or against this at this public hearing? Yes, sir?
Hello, my name's Ryan DeWitt. Their boarding house saved my life, believe it or not.
Can you give me your address, please?
It's 91 East North Street, Room A, in Newark, Ohio. Their boarding house saved my life. I was recently released from prison with no address in November. I contemplated after funds ran out for hotels to kill myself because of my mental illness and my fear of being homeless. They opened up their home. I had no money. They opened up their home to me, and I've been staying there ever since, and they've invited me to church. Since then, I've just, I felt like a part of community, a part of some, something greater than myself, and they really made me feel like family. And I just, I really thank them for that, and this is a very great need. And I know at least four other people that could have been homeless in my house alone, in our duplex, on our East North. And they, there's some people behind on rent, and they don't even pressure them about it. They just say, "Honey, get it to us when you can. We know you're trying, and we respect that." And I, and that's a great need in landlords in this city. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for or against? Just put your hand up. Yes, sir?
My name is Vernon Smith. I'm the founder of What Is Truth Ministry, and have in the past had two different rooming houses on Hudson Avenue. Had one for two years.
Could you give me your address?
Yeah, I'm sorry. 1838 Willow Ridge Drive in Heathrow.
Thank you.
Okay? Anything else?
No.
Okay. So we had a, we had a rooming house, 572 Hudson Avenue, for two years. And it was more than full because of the need that's already been expressed by Natalie so well, and it is huge. I mean, there's just, and so that house got sold at a sheriff's sale. We didn't even know it was going to sell, but it, all of a sudden, we lost it. And then, just not too long ago, I had got access to a rooming house on Hudson Avenue, 197, and I borrowed money to pay the first month's rent. We had a program to help the individuals coming to stay there improve their lives. And we got into the third month, and the owner took it away from us and said, "No, I'm in charge. I'm shutting the program down." So then we had no place to put people. And the calls just kept coming. Do you know any place that I can stay? And so then I became aware of Natalie and Barry Cost. And ever since I've met them, I've really been relieved in knowing there is somewhere that people can be referred to and feeling confident that they are going to be treated well and treated fairly. And so I'm just thrilled with what I see is happening there. And it's just, I just can't say enough about what they're doing and what I'm sure they'll continue to do is they stay in this business. So thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, sir. Anyone else for or against? Yes, sir.
Greg Sheets, 3016 Mount Runyon Road, Newark, Ohio. I, we've, the Cost and I have been partners at one time purchasing houses, and some of them, I wish that you would just put an X on, just condemned. But I think we've sat in these meetings before and heard the burden of Newark, and some of these houses are rundown and you've, eyesores. I've been here, I've lived here all my life, and I've seen some of these houses go down. But I think that if you would look at our houses, we've brought up the value. We've taken the houses on. We have improved them, made many improvements to them, to the point that I believe that the city of Newark asks us to take on the houses and invest in it. So it's not like they're going to take the house and it's going to be rundown and it's going to be just horrible. They and myself have taken the houses and improved them and made them better. So I think that you can rest assured that what they are going to do is going to be beneficial to Newark as well. It's not going to be an eyesore, so.
Thanks, Greg. Anyone else?
Can I just add one thing?
Sure.
Thank you.
It's Ryan DeWitt again. Just speaking from perspective of the houses, I was there and seeing the house a week before I moved in, and just in that week, that house had been renovated so much. They put in all-new drywall. They put in, except for the middle connector, they resurfaced it. They put in new tile floors all throughout the whole house. They put in central air, new lamps, new electric, everything, a new front porch. It's beautiful. I mean, if you guys ever get the chance, stop by and look at it. It's beautiful. And they turned a, a rundown home into a beautiful, a rundown house into a beautiful home for many people, so, yeah.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. May I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. May I ask Mr. Rhodes to explain why the Planning Commission said no?
Can we?
Okay, you can. Okay.
Anyone else for or con? Mr. Rhodes, would you?
I have a question, too.
Okay. Is this one?
Yeah. Can you just, can you just explain to me why the Planning Commission said no?
Sure. In that particular area, when, maybe eight years ago, when we redid the zoning in the city of Newark, we looked at every street, every neighborhood of the entire city, and at that point, we put designations in those areas. And we designated this area at that time to be single-family residence. Now, in this particular case, this house was already a duplex, which it's an illegally allowed duplex under the current zoning. So in my recommendation, I did not want to change it to a rooming house status, but to a TFR status and have them go back through the Board of Zoning Appeals, which would make it a legally allowed duplex, which would give the engineers' office and the zoning Nate the ability to approve any structural changes. When it's an illegally allowed property, illegally allowed, if that makes any sense, you know, to approve changes and stuff, they can't. So don't, in other words, make structural changes, move walls, things like that. But under the current zoning, as a duplex, they can have four unrelated people that live in each half, and we can't take that right away. But we didn't feel as though that we wanted to go one step further and allow maybe five per half, per half. But four is what the current code does allow on a duplex. Four unrelated.
Mr. Rhodes, hang on just a second. Mr. Raff?
Yeah, if we change, if we pass this and change the zoning to MFR, does that allow, Miss Cost said, two additional people? Is that two additional people per address or two additional people total, as in one additional person per address?
It would be one additional person per address or two additional people total.
And can I ask a question? That is also based on square footage.
Yes.
That's an maximum, I would say, that's going to be.
Yeah. And the square footage would have to be looked at, and Nate would get into that.
Basically, you could have 10 people instead of.
I'm just saying what the, you know, what our current zoning allows, but each case is different.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Raff?
So I'm sorry. I'm just slightly confused on your explanation.
Okay.
You said right now it's an illegally allowed duplex.
Yes, and let me explain that.
Let me ask you a question.
Go ahead.
And you wanted it to be zoned so that it was a legally allowed duplex?
Yes.
So that you could approve structural changes?
That's correct. That's, that's why my.
And MFR is not, would that comply with that? Or is there a different zoning that you wanted it to be zoned?
TFR.
TFR, okay.
TFR. And why?
So you would approve of TFR, but that would not increase the.
We're somewhat obligated to approve of that because that's what it was prior to the zoning changes. You can't, you can't take a house.
TFR's TFR, I'm sorry.
Temporary board, they have to go temporary board of revision. Okay? For, for a duplex zoning, which would allow them to have four people, four unrelated people, per half. Okay? But being an illegal duplex, that would allow us to approve any structural changes. An illegally allowed duplex does not allow us to approve structural changes at this point because it's an illegally allowed duplex. Now, if they don't want to make any changes to it, they don't have to come to the Board of Zoning Appeals. You know, if they just want to rent it like it is, they don't have to come in because it's an illegally allowed piece. It's kind of one of those pieces that kind of got caught in the middle that, you know, when we decided, gosh, that area should be single-family residential, that's what we see the future of it, you can't take away the right that was already put in place prior to the zoning change. I mean, you can't take a property owner's rights, and it was a duplex at that point.
Just to straighten up Mr. Raff's question, if it is approved for MFR, which is what they asked for, then they can make any changes or whatever they want?
Well, they'd be able to make changes, yes, if it was approved. That's, that's correct. And they'd also be able to have additional people in the house.
They're asking for MFR.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Anybody else?
I have a question for Mrs. Cost.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
Yes, ma'am.
I live within a block of that house, and I walked over by it today. And the only address I, I saw one door in the front that said 173. Is it only one door?
No, ma'am. On the side, there's an upstairs entrance.
On the south side?
Yes.
Toward town?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, and that is 175? Because the one in front said 173. It seemed to me that should be switched, but, okay.
Yeah, that's the way they were, ma'am. And may I add, Mr. Rhodes said that the description on the property isn't illegal, non-conforming? Am I correct in what he said?
I believe that's what he said, yes.
In the letter that he gave us, it is current legal. It's a legal, L, no I in front of it, non-conforming. So we have the right to do what we want with it right now, and it would be grandfathered and stay the way that it is, a duplex. It can operate the same.
Correct. I believe that's what he said, yes. Well, the illegal part, yes.
Well, the illegal part, we can't do anything with it right now.
Those are just words. You have a duplex. You have, you have a duplex, and you can operate it as a duplex right now. If you want to make building changes inside the house, you have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, okay? So that we change the zoning to make it a legally duplex. We're just, we're kind of mincing words here. If you want to go in there, tear rooms out, and move things, then come to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and they'll give you the authority to do that, which would give us the authority to approve such changes. If you want to operate it as a duplex right now, you don't have to come in and do anything. And, and under our current zoning laws, you can have up to four unrelated people live in each side. That's the current law.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
I have a question for Natalie, too.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Hey, Natalie. It's true. I'm a big fan of what you're doing, so we're going to start with that.
Thank you.
Is there an onsite coordinator that will be living at the resident?
Uh, no. There's a gentleman that does work for our company. We have a lead abatement company, and so we're general contractors and stuff, and he works with us, and he does maintenance there with it, but I am in the property every day. I clean the property. I go check on my people.
As far as the lease agreements go for the property, is there any sort of curriculum or drug testing or anything like that?
I do not do drug testing. I do do a background check, and, and everyone's really upfront with me, and especially if they're coming through BHP, Coalition of Housing is putting people through, they're very upfront with me. Yes, I have this charge, or I have that charge, or, you know, things like that. I'm, like I said, I'm in the properties every day. Right there's the trash. There's no beer cans. They know, and it's stated in the house rules when they move in. We read the house rules. We go over them with them. They sign them. So they're acknowledging it, and if, it's grounds for immediate termination. I'm just, you're here for a second chance. I'm here to help you. I'll help you. If you don't want it, then got to move on.
Mr. Raff, you have a question for Natalie?
Yeah, you said you'd do a background check. What would exclude them from being allowed to stay there?
It would be violent, like violent domestic violence, hardcore felony, you know, just like, or more recent drug charges of, you know, meth, things like that, things that are more hardcore, because we do have recovering addicts. We do have recovering alcoholics. We have sex offenders that are there, and, you know, people that are trying to recover, they just, they don't need that in their environment. They're trying to do better. They're trying to get better. So that would exclude a person if it's a hardcore felony, so.
Mr. Johnson?
If it is changed, if this changes to multifamily, does that only include this residence or does that include a whole block or?
Just this residence.
It includes only this residence?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Frazier?
Thank you. Natalie, if this does not pass, and you're only allowed to have four residents in each house, do you still plan to operate business as usual?
Yes, sir.
And then what is the real need to have this changed in order for you to have an extra resident?
To have two, it'll be two more people.
Off the streets, in the house?
Two more people, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Raff?
I have a question for Mr. Rhodes.
Does anybody else have a question for Natalie while we have her here?
I have one more.
That's okay.
Four questions. How many people do you currently have as residents?
Currently, there are five.
Okay. Thank you.
And how many properties do you have in Newark?
We have 11 properties. Three of those are boarding houses. And the one that Mr. Sheets was talking about, that the city of Newark asked us to take, is actually 16, 16 North Fifth Street, and that is a boarding house now.
And the other eight are single-family or?
Yeah, the rest, there's only three that are boarding houses. Elmwood, 16 North Fifth, and 89 and 91 East North. The rest are all homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rhodes, we'll wrap this up here. Mr. Raff?
If we were to change this particular residence to MFR, then what happens with the residences on either side of the property? Are we now obligated to change those to MFR if somebody comes and asks us?
Well, yeah, this is something Doug Murmy and I've argued about for years, on zoning and stuff. You know, Jeff, honestly, it would be, again, council's decision, but if the MFR is in place, it makes a stronger argument for the next house to be, have the same zoning because the property lines would attach. And so, you know, ultimately, it ends up being a council decision on the direction of this, that council did speak when we changed that area to single-family when we redid The council did speak when we changed that area to single-family when we redid the zoning. So this would be an amendment to, to that. The other thing, too, tonight, there seems to be a lot of people in the crowd that are in favor of this change. At Planning Commission, it was just the opposite. We had people in the crowd that were opposed to it. So there are, there are opposing views. And we came out from Planning Commission opposed to it, in part from the input we heard that night, and in part from the fact that the zoning code, which a lot of us, Don worked on it, I mean, with us, there's a whole bunch of us that put a lot of time and energy into it and analyzed the whole city. Did we get it perfect? Absolutely not. Have we made some changes to it? Yes. I always call it a, you know, a project that is constantly changing and in motion. And tonight is, is part of that, being in change and in motion. So really, if you want to allow them to have more people in there other than four per side, then you'd vote in favor of it. If you don't, and you want to fire a recommendation, then you'd say no and they can have four people on each side of the duplex unrelated in there.
Mr. Cost. Hang on, Mr. Rose, we have three more.
David, this property, at some point, if this property was sold, what would the zoning go back to?
It would still be, it would still be, that's a very good question. It would still be a duplex unless, let's just say, Mr. Ellington bought the property and he wanted it to be single-family. And he went in and he made it a single-family residence. And I believe, and I could get this wrong, I believe as long as it was a single-family residence for six months, then at that point, and lived in and occupied, then at that point, it would lose its right to be an illegally allowed duplex. But their intent is to use it as a duplex, so it's illegally allowed. They'd come to the Board of Zoning Appeals, they would give them the classification for it to be an illegally allowed duplex, which would allow them to approve building changes.
From a definition with our zoning code, because I can't say that I can, I can quote it whatsoever, when you say duplex and.
When I say duplex, a layman term would be a house that's split in half and two different families live in it. And then if you boil it down a little bit further, our zoning code says, and our regulations say, in a single house or residence or half of a house, up to four unrelated people can live in that residence. Up to four unrelated. That, that way, in a duplex, you could have up to eight unrelated. Those are our current laws. That's currently what's on the books. So we're bound, we're bound by those.
Mr. Raff?
I have a question for Ms. Floyd, so if you want to.
Ms. Hall, do you have a question for Mr. Rose?
Yes, you mentioned square footage. I mean, if this is voted multifamily, there may not be approval for an extra person in each one because of the square footage?
There are some square footage requirements. I personally have not been in the house. I don't know what the square footage of it is. But our zoning inspector Nate would identify how big the house is and he would work the metrics to determine how many people could stay in there based on the square footage of the house. That would be correct.
So we might go through this. It might be multifamily and there would still be four on each side, correct?
I can't, I can't speak to that, but that, are you asking hypothetically, could that happen? The answer to the question would be yes. Hypothetically, it could, but again, it depends on the size and I've not been in it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Floyd?
When people came to the Planning Commission, were some of those people who were opposed to it neighbors?
Yes, yeah, and they, they were people that lived there a long period of time, single-family residences.
Okay, that's all you need to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Thank you.
Hang on just a second. Mr. Raff?
I just had a question for Ms. Floyd. Being the seventh ward councilor up and living in the neighborhood, what is your opinion?
What an order. We get into debate. We'll have to wait till she has discussion, which we'll have here to speak.
I have a point of clarification for Director Rose. Director, so if we move this to multifamily boarding house designation and it sells and the owner has that multifamily designation, they're allowed to create a boarding house and continue to operate a boarding house, or does it default back into the duplex?
No, it would be a boarding house. And they could be sold as a boarding house and used as a boarding house. But let's give an example. I'll use Don again because it's pick on Don night. If Don bought the house as a boarding house and he'd want it to be single-family residence, which is what the, which is what we designated the street to be, he would bring it back to the temporary board of revision and he'd say, hey, I've got a boarding house designation multifamily. I'd like it to be single-family because I want to make it consistent with what's in the neighborhood. They would probably grant him that. And it, I believe as long as he stayed in there six months or was used, there's a timeframe there and I'm not exactly sure what that is, then at that point, it would be a single-family home.
Okay, we're going to let Mrs. Cost speak once more, then we're going to close the public hearing, then we're going to read her for a second reading, and then if there's any debate, we'll have it and then we'll vote.
On regards to the square footage of the house, the Planning Commission.
Joe Paul.
Joe Paul. He is the city inspector that has to come and inspect the property to make sure that the square footage is accurate for each room. He's already done so. It has passed the inspection. We are waiting for the decision to come from here to when they would issue the license for us.
So he said you could have 10?
Yes, if square footage is there. Also, on the, if we ever sold the property, we would go on record to relinquish and put it back to the zoning of single home. I don't know that I can do it or I can't do that.
Take that out.
Okay, but for a boarding house, I mean, obviously you have to carry insurance, commercial insurance. And they, that person at that time would have to be approved, just like we had to be approved for the boarding also.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We're going to close this public hearing. Autumn, would you read 16-01 for the second time?
Ordinance 16-01 by Mr. Raff and Mr. Marmy. An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 173 and 175 Elmwood Avenue, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of single-family residence RH High Density District to MFR Multifamily Residence District.
You've heard the second reading of 16-01. What is your wish?
Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. I've been privy to a number of zoning change requests. There have been a number of incidences that, like the cost. I commend you on what you're doing. I'm a champion of what you're doing.
Should I call Port of Order? Mr. Murray, can I let Mr. Raff make a motion to adopt first? Oh, sure. Mr. Raff.
Motion to adopt.
Motion by Raff, 3003. All the same.
Second, second by Buck. Thank you, Mr. Raff.
Mr. Murray.
That's all. I commend what they're doing. However, way back in the day, we did a favor for a property that was the Berry Barn. And we made it commercial so they could sell stoves out of that barn. It was a great thing. The Berry Barn was great. Now we have a commercial property in the middle of the residential housing because of that request for an individual who is doing the right thing at the right time. I honestly believe that you're doing the right thing at the right time. However, we have to look at that use, no matter who the owner is, no matter what the use is, is that, no matter, if it's a boarding house that's being run like yours or a boarding house that's not being run as well as yours. So therefore, we have to look at the residents in the area, what the, what the area is zoned for, and what we should do as far as maintaining the integrity of that neighborhood and of the property owners, the property owners' rights, not only yours, but also those surrounding you. Again, I commend what you're doing. I think you're doing a great thing here, but I can't support changing it because you will not always be the owners. And someone could change that because of the zoning classification change. It is in stone. And even if you tell us that you're going to change it back, that doesn't mean it's going to happen. And because, you know, things happen and things change. They always do, in particular with ownership of a property. And so I can't support it at this time just because of the neighborhood that it sits in. I agree with Mr. Rose, the lesser would be more appropriate based on what it is and because it is a duplex, but I can't support additional in making it a boarding house as such just because of that.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. And just to remind everyone that since the Planning Commission did deny this, it will take seven votes to pass it. Who else?
I just want to say, as I said, I live very close to that property. And I've lived there a very, very long time. And I have known times when there were other rooming houses on Elmwood Avenue, not too far from my house. And it was not good for the neighborhood. Now, I know how you're running yours and I, I agree with Mr. Murray. I commend you on that because I, there is a need. I mean, there's no doubt with the homeless situation we have and, and the number of gentlemen who do not have homes, you know. But you're going to provide enough homes for eight people as opposed to 10 if we deny this. And I just can't change the, the condition of the neighborhood for, for that because it, we do, sometimes we have to think long-term and that's not always an, an easy thing for people to understand, but we do. We have to see what it's going to be like in the future. And the next owner who may not have the good intentions that you have and may not be there on a daily basis to check on it and to check to make sure there's no alcohol, because I know alcohol and drugs has been a real issue in that area of the community. And so it's not something that I can support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Anyone else?
I'm just concerned that this one property is going to be rezoned and I kind of don't think I like to see single parcels be rezoned to make something acceptable. I mean, totally, I, for more, I guess, what do I say? Zoning that is, stays about the way it ought to be, the way, the reason it was zoned that way. It was zoned that way because they wanted a single residence. And I, if we were making the whole area a residence, I'd probably vote for it. But I'm not going to vote for this because it's only one property.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Mr. Mark, Mr. Frazier.
Mr. Mark. Natalie, what you're doing is great. And I commend you and I feel that you're called to do this because you are dedicating so much time and effort and investment and you really want to make a difference in our community. And I want you to continue to make a difference in our community. I continue, want you to continue to find houses for people that are homeless. The issue that is at stake for this proposal is two people. And I understand that it's heartbreaking when you have two people, but the hope is that you can find additional residences and additional housing for those two people. And on the plus side, you can provide for four people on each side of the duplex to get out of the street and have a new crack and a successful life. So continue to be involved. Do not be discouraged. I think that this is a step for ultimate good. And so I want to encourage you to continue to find properties, to continue to invest and continue to go to the state you're doing. Thank you.
Anyone else? Autumn, please call the world vote.
Mr. Cost?
No.
Mrs. Floyd?
No.
Mr. Frazier?
No.
Ms. Hall?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Marmy?
No.
Mr. Raff?
No.
Mr. Ralletta?
No.
Mr. Blake?
No.
And Mr. Buck?
No.
I'm sorry, 16-01 does not pass, I'm sorry. Next on the agenda. That would be a good time if you'd like to, if anyone is here for that, if you'd like to go ahead and vote, that would be a good time. Next is our first session, section of comments from citizens. Wait.
Butcher, 263 Union Street. I've been going around these different neighborhoods, different alleys. And when I see it, when I look at it, some of these streets, alleys, they need to be fixed. Now, I've been going down the Trail Valley Road, that, that street is very rough, has potholes in it. And I don't see, I don't see nobody's cars actively get broke or busted. And I'd see Union Street here paved. I know a lot of streets need to be paved. But let me just say, I'd see something done about these streets and these alleys. And the double 10 forecast, bus clear at night, lower than 30s. Warm up, it's back on the way, only get high in the mid 60s. I am looking, I'm trying to work up a warm temperature or weather there. And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just saying, we're going to get warmer temperatures for next week. Oh, so we're wearing more this week, this week. Don't forget the 2016 drill, 2016 drill be taking part this week. I consider the double 10 weather forecast.
Thank you, Wade. Anyone else for this first section of citizens' comments? Here is one other section after the legislation. Okay, we want you, ordinances on the second reading, 16-03.
Ordinance 16-03 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Frazier. An ordinance amending the property maintenance code for the City of Newark, Ohio to provide standard fees for certain abatement actions.
You've heard the second reading of 16-03. What is your wish?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt 16-03.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Buck. Do we have any discussion on 16-03? See none? Autumn, please call the world vote.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
And Mr. Buck?
Yes.
16-03 passes 10-0. Next, we have ordinances on the first reading, 16-04.
Ordinance 16-04 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost. An ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances and resolutions as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, providing for the adoption of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances, repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith and declaring an emergency.
16-04 is on the first reading, but it is an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 16-04.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Johnson. Is there any discussion on 16-04?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
This is a matter of formality of bringing our ordinances in conjunction with that of the state. It's an annual event sponsored by our law director.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Anyone else? Autumn, please call the world vote.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
And Mr. Buck?
Yes.
16-04 passes 10-0. Next, we have 16-05 on the first reading.
Ordinance 16-05 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost. An ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract subject to the appropriation of funds with the combined General Health District of Lincoln County for the continued delivery of public health services to the City of Newark, Ohio.
16-05 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next, we have 16-06.
Ordinance 16-06 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Marmy, and Mr. Cost. It's an ordinance to provide the issuance of $370,000 of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of improvements to the city's landfill and all necessary appurtenances thereto and declaring an emergency.
16-06 is on the first reading, but it is an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 16-06.
Motion by, motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 16-06? See none? Autumn, please call the world vote.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
And Mr. Buck?
Yes.
16-06 passes 10-0. Next on the first reading, we have 16-07A.
Ordinance 16-07A by Mr. Frasier, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, and Mr. Raff, and ordinance amending Chapter 618 of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Newark, Ohio regarding breed-specific vicious dog designation.
16-07A will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next, we have 16-08.
Ordinance 16-08 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff, and ordinance vacating an alley dedicated by ordinance 47-94 being a strip of land 16 feet wide off the east side of Lot 72 as shown on the plat of the Bell Vista Annex at Plat Book 3, page 277 of the Licking County plat records. Said alley is located south of Lynnwood Avenue.
16-08 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next, we have 16-09.
Ordinance 16-09 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff, and ordinance vacating a portion of alley, of an alley as shown on the plat of the B.E. Jones and D.H. Watkins addition at Plat Book 4, page 116 of the Licking County plat records. Said portion of alley is located east of North Hazelwood Avenue.
16-09 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next, we have resolutions on the second reading, 16-23.
Resolution 16-23 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard your second reading of 16-23. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 16-23.
Motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 16-23? Seeing none, autopsy's call, world vote.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frasier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
And Mr. Buck?
Yes.
16-23 passes 10-0. Now, we go to resolutions on the first reading, 16-24.
Resolution 16-24 by Mr. Marmy and Mr. Cost, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
16-.
Mr. President. Make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on Resolution 16-24.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Buck. Mr. Marmy?
Yes, Mr. President. We need to expedite this. This is a payout, and we always get these individuals their money as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Autopsy's call, world vote, the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frasier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
And Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule is being waived. Mr. Marmy?
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt Resolution 16-24.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any other discussion on 16-24? Seeing none, autopsy's call, world vote.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frasier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
And Mr. Buck?
Yes.
16-24 passes 10-0. Next on the first reading, we have 16-25.
Resolution 16-25 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service of the City of Newark, Ohio to negotiate and enter into contracts subject to the appropriation of funds for professional engineering services in connection with the design and construction of a riverbank filtration system project pursuant to Article 10.02D of the Charter of the City of Newark. This contract for -- oh, excuse me, this contract for professional services does not require competitive bidding.
16-25 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next on the first reading, we have 16-26.
Resolution 16-26 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating and disappropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
16-26 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next, we have 16-27.
Resolution 16-27 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff, Mr. Frasier, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to enter into a lease purchase agreement without competitive bidding for the acquisition of one fire truck to sell an existing fire truck and apply the selling price against the purchase thereof and declaring an emergency.
16-27 will be held.
Emergency clause.
Oh, I'm sorry. It has emergency. I'm sorry. Miss that one.
Mr. President.
You've heard 16-27. What is your wish, Mr. Marmy?
To make a motion to adopt Resolution 16-27.
Second. Motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on 16-27? Autopsy's call, world vote.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frasier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
And Mr. Buck?
Yes.
16-27 passes 10-0. And finally, this evening, we have on the first reading, 16-28.
Resolution 16-28 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Newark to prepare and submit an application to the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Office of Criminal Justice Services for a 2016 Ohio Community Police Relations Grant.
16-28, Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule, Resolution 16-28.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. We need to expedite this in order to meet a deadline to submit this.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Autopsy's call, world vote, the two-day reading rule, 16-28.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frasier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
And Mr. Buck?
Yes.
The two-day reading rule is being waived. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt Resolution 16-28.
Second. Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. We have any discussion on 16-28? Seeing none, autopsy's call, world vote.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frasier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Riletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
16-28 passes 10-0. And that concludes our legislation for the season. Thank you for your attention. Next on the agenda, we have our second opportunity for comments from citizens. Again, this is not a debate with council. This is just your opportunity to be heard. Do we have anyone who would like to speak? Mr. Frasier.
My name is William Butcher, 263 Union Street. I just noticed someone at home a couple of days ago, there's a couple of emergency vehicles from going to a emergency. And a lot of these vehicles, well, these are motorists, but not pulling over for an emergency vehicle. They would not stop. They kept rolling going. And let me just say, when I saw that, I was, yeah, I went a little bit mad. I was a little bit PO. And I know there's some city in Newark could do something about that, because there has to be, something has to be done by these people not stopping for emergency vehicles. I have an emergency light back at home. Every time I hear emergency vehicle, I just hit that emergency light that by on the snow, there's an emergency vehicle coming. Some of them, I'm using my emergency light. But on the other side of coin, these emergency vehicles has a right way, where they have to go. And when I say, when I look at, something has to be done. I'm in District B, floor, Jeremy. I thought they'd call, I thought they should know about that.
That passed. Thank you, Wade. Jeremy, did you make a note of that?
It's here.
Anyone else? Any city officials? If anyone wants to speak. Just about missed it.
I'll speak fast. Karen Johnston, I live at 207 Brenton Drive, Newark, Ohio. And is this the time to comment on your proposed ordinance for the specific dog breed?
You can comment.
I can comment. Anything I want. I just know that in our own neighborhood, we've had several families move in with aggressive menacing-type dogs that are off their property. And it's not comfortable having to walk with pockets, a pocket of pepper spray and a club to protect yourself or your dog that you're walking in the neighborhood because the people don't comply. Dogs follow breeding. Golden retrievers will retrieve, labs will retrieve. Dogs that are herding, dogs will herd, pointers will point. Pit bulls were bred for fighting bulls originally, is how they got their name. But due to people, they have been bred in general for fighting, dogfighting and various things. You just never know what the dog's breeding is that you're getting unless you have a very reliable, expensive dog. I would also say that people who say, well, you don't know, not all pit bulls are bad. I agree. I have seen some nice pit bulls in the training classes. The point is, you never know what they're going to do. Forty-one percent of the pit bull fatalities last year were by family dogs on family members or friends, and they never thought it would happen. Okay? You just don't know. As far as multiple dogs and being maintained, there's a whole different makeup in a dog's mentality when it's in a group than it is when it's alone. And I know that because I've owned multiple dogs. And if you watch them, one start to bark, the other will bark. One runs over here, checks something, the other one goes with them. So there is more danger in multiple dog ownership than in single ownership of dogs that could pose a risk. Large dogs pose risk. I've had a German Shepherd. Technically, they're the most likely to bite. They just don't kill as often. And so, I understand that. Also, 50% of those fatal dog bites last year were by multiple dog attacks, two or more dogs. So I feel that that standard needs to stay. And another thing, the new standard has the four categories of dogs, one being regular dogs, then nuisance dogs, and in the, whatever it's called, as I was reading at the ordinance, it would be the regulations, it's a nuisance is menacing or biting off property. Now, I don't know about you, but biting me is more than just a nuisance. I have been dog bit, and it's not fun. It's not an inconvenience or an annoyance, which is what a nuisance is in the dictionary. So I don't think we, the classifications are exactly valid. Also, there's no requirement in the new laws for euthanasia of a dog that has killed someone or another dog. So when I'm walking my dog around, these dogs that are always, not always, but frequently off their property, charging and being vicious, they could kill my dog, and yet there would not be the requirement for that to happen to the other dog. Doesn't exactly seem just or fair. And I've sent some of you emails, several of you, with statistics on the dog fatalities last year, so I won't go into all of them. But pit bulls accounted for under 10% of the total dog population, but they accounted for 82% of fatal deaths of the 28 out of 34. Forty-one percent of those were children nine and under. Fifty-nine percent were adults. Of that 59% in the adults, 65% were adults that were 61 and older. There are a lot of older people in our neighborhood. There are a lot of children. A dog bite that bites an adult on the leg gets a child in the face. That's just all there is to it. And only 9% of those fatalities resulted in any meaningful criminal charges. So I just am very much opposed to the change in the regulations.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
My name's Alan Dave here. I live at 334 Gregory Drive, Newark, Ohio. And it's to back up some of the statistics that she was talking about, about the dogs. I was attacked three Saturdays ago by a pit bull on our street, and it just tore my pants. But I called the police. Matter of fact, I was on the porch of the people who owned the dog. I rang the doorbell. I just wanted to tell them to put their dog, they ought to put their dog back in their property because it ran out in the street and grabbed me by the pants. They wouldn't answer the doorbell. So I called the police at the time, and the policeman told me just to back off of their property and go on home. He would come and talk with them. So I'd done that. I got off their property, went back to my house, and policeman come and talked with me, asked me what happened, and wanted to know if the dog drew blood. And I told him, no, it just tore my pants a little bit. And so, he said, well, I'll go down and talk with them. Well, he went down to talk with these people. The dog attacked him, and they had to send him to the emergency room. So I understand. People called me, whoever was over this, this last Saturday said the dog had been put down. But I don't know why people would have to have vicious dogs in a neighborhood where we got a lot of old people and grandkids coming around, and that dog could have killed a kid. I mean, it weighed 75 pounds, and actually, I was kind of foolish for even hitting the dog on the head and walking up on the property to tell the people, put the dog away. But anyway, that's all I got to say. I just think people with pit bulls shouldn't have more than one or whatever in a neighborhood where there's older people and young kids like that.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Heron. I live at 143 Gregory Drive, and I live across the street from the people that have these dogs. And I simply want you to know that I'm in compliance with these folks. Those dogs are mean, they scare people. We have people who like to walk our neighborhood. It's an inner circle, mile and one-tenth, and nobody in our neighborhood feels safe. And I'd like to ask council to consider the fact that these are vicious, mean animals. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
I'll pass. Mr. President, thank you.
Assistant Law Director Moore?
I'll pass. Thank you.
Mayor Hall?
Yes, just a couple of quick comments. This past week, the Red Cross had the Hero's Breakfast, and certainly we had our safety departments, police and fire, some individuals recognized. We're very proud of that. While both units do wonderful things every day, these individuals were in life-threatening situations and did what they're supposed to do and did the right things and did wonderful things to save lives. So I want to thank them for that. All, they're very discreet and very shy in taking those awards, but I think it says something great about both their police and fire units. And then this past Saturday, Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Licking County had their bowling for kids, and I just want to thank everybody in the community, corporations, individuals that raised an enormous amount of money, breaking their any previous records they had. As we went into the third shift of bowlers, we'd already reached their goal, which was made Director Jennifer Yutree was quite happy. That was kind of great icing on the cake at the end of the day. But it's a great event and has done wonderful things and certainly reaches out to the youth in our community to give them good mentors and good guidance as they grow up in life in the community. So with that, thanks again for the community supporting that great event. And I pass.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I heard it was like one hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Hundred and thirty-five thousand. Their goal was a hundred and twenty. Last year it was a hundred and five, and they surpassed that. This year, so they set it to a hundred and twenty, and were nervous, but obviously achieved that quite well.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Cost? Mr. President, I will pass. Thank you, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd.
On Saturday, I went down to Little Bear to buy a few groceries, and there weren't very many people in there. And I asked the clerks who were in there. I said, so is business way down? And they said, yeah, really is. So I would encourage everybody in here to go to Little Bear a couple of times. It's easy to get to. You know, you just go down Fourth Street to Walnut and over, and you can go right in the parking lot and back out the same way. It's a nice little store, has a nice deli. But also support Kix-Mix Bookstore, the Sweet Twenty-Three, La Paloma on the south side of the square. That's all torn up. People can't get to it. And if you can't pull up at the front or come somewhere close, people don't go. So please support these downtown businesses that are hurting. By the end of May, it'll be beautiful and we'll all love it, but we want, we need to keep a grocery store in downtown Newark. You know, we didn't have one for a little while, and that was not a good scene. Secondly, I mentioned in the prayer, Crazy Jimmy, Jimmy McKitchen, has stage four lung cancer. I think he's been given like six months to live. You know, many of us have seen him in a lot of community events, taking pictures, and they are having a fundraiser for he and his family tomorrow night from five to seven at the Manicore. It's a spaghetti dinner. I think the cost is seven dollars. So anybody who can go, please go, because, you know, Jimmy's did a lot for the community, and it's a very difficult time for his family. And finally, I'm on a committee, an outreach committee. I know the mayor's on the board, and Jeremy's involved with United Way. But United Way is, Deb Dingus, who is in charge of United Way, is going to walk the county for fifty days. She's fifty this year, and she, they're trying to earn fifty thousand dollars for United Way. And so she is going to sleep out. She's going to hit every township, every school district. And I volunteer in the office a couple of days a week, and she was saying she'd really like to see some city officials involved. So on April the seventh and eighth, she's going to be in Newark. The kickoff breakfast is at the Doubletree on the morning of the seventh, and then she's going to be at the Canal Market District, at Little Texas Ben Franklin. She's going to be at Newark High School. She's got, and this is all on the website. She's going to sleep out that night at OSU Newark COTC. And then the next day, she's going to have a conference at OSU Newark and be at C-Tech, and then she's going to sleep out every night at Chestnut Assisted Living. She wants to bring, I think most of us think of United Way as a fundraising thing, which it is, but she has worked really hard to make people aware, as we heard earlier tonight, of the homeless issue in the community. And she wants, she wants people to go walk with her, you know, just shorter, as long a distance as you can. If you want to sleep out, I don't think I'll do that, but if you want to go sleep out with her in a tent or a sleeping bag, go to it. And I mean, they're gonna, she's mapped it out to go all over the county. And the final day, you may want to jot this down, is May 26th. She'll be walking from TruCor and Heath into downtown Newark, and they'll have a final celebration in the courtyard at the Works. So I'd like to encourage you, you know, it would be encouraging to her and to the community to see some city officials who are involved in that endeavor as well. And there is a fundraising sheet on the back if you want to raise some money for the, for the concern. Last I knew, they had eighteen thousand. I don't know if they have more than that now, but, you know, they're working to increase that amount. So, and with that, Happy Easter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Good news is, your knee will be just fine by then.
Okay. I can walk the whole county, right?
Mr. Frazier?
Yes. So I'm excited for the direction the city's going with sixteen oh-three's property maintenance code and with sixteen twenty-seven, the purchase of a new fire department. We're starting to address the needs that are in our community, and that is improving property maintenance and maintaining our neighborhoods as well as investing in capital improvements, which is buying a fire trucks to make sure that we have public safety forces in the future. To address Jim, Karen, and Alan, I hear what you are saying, but the current situation that you're in is under the current law. And so what we're seeing is if we maintain this via S.L. law, you're going to continue to have the same problems. So the goal is, is to treat vicious dogs just as that, as vicious dogs, and to have our safety forces address vicious dogs that are actually vicious instead of chasing pit bulls that have never done anything to anybody. So with the current designations of nuisance, dangerous, and vicious dogs, the hope is that we can address property or dog owners to maintain control of their animals and to prevent them from running in the neighborhoods and attacking you and hold people to higher account for when they do. And so the goal is ultimately to improve your public safety in your neighborhood and hold vicious dogs and vicious dog owners accountable for that. And so I understand that your concern is that we'll open this up to allow vicious dogs to be held in multiple owners, but honestly, this is strengthening the laws and enabling a safer community for all of us to live in. And so I appreciate you guys being vocal about this issue and bringing it to council and voicing your concerns, and I hope you continue to do that in the future. With that, I'll pass.
Mr. Frazier? Miss Hall?
I pass. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Marmee?
Yes, I first need to call a finance committee meeting. Second, I am going to state that I hope we pray for Washington, D.C. We have Newark Catholic High School visiting there this week, and we also have Wilson School visiting there this week. Both the buses were taken off at the same time up there this morning, but they made it safely, and hopefully they'll have a great experience. Next thing, I just wanted to indicate, and, oh, Mr. Johnson left. I was going to tell Mr. Johnson, I thought he handled all POs in the city, so I figured he could handle Williams' issue. And I want to wish everybody a Happy Resurrection Day.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Ratt.
Thank you. I too wanted to promote the fundraiser tomorrow for Crazy Jimmy at the Newark Manicore. I'm going to do the best I can to get there. In the interest of March being Development Disabilities Awareness Month, I just want to let you know that today is National Down Syndrome Day. I have a friend who has a couple of Down Syndrome boys, and he's also a pediatric doctor who does an awful lot for Down Syndrome in Licking County. As far as the public hearing today, I voted no for the zoning for two reasons. One, most typically, I'm always going to vote against spot zoning, which is exactly what that was. And then two, I'm almost always going to vote with what the ward council person thinks because that's their neighborhood. That's why I asked Mrs. Floyd specifically, and we should keep on against it. That's just reaffirmed. I wanted to say, as far as the dog ordinance goes, I agree with Mr. Frazier. We're right along the same lines there. You know, I've been spearheading this from the beginning, and my goal has always been to make it incredibly difficult for a vicious dog to live in Newark and to make it incredibly painful for somebody to own a vicious dog. The one thing that the ordinance does not change is that you can, still cannot have more than one vicious dog if you're allowed to keep a vicious dog at all. So you're still not allowed to have more than one, and all of the restrictions that apply to vicious dogs remain. None of those change. The biggest problem we have with dogs and dog bites in the city of Newark and nationwide, for that matter, is reporting. The dog that's on the porch that comes out to the street, bites your penis, is breaking the law. And the way this new ordinance is written, if that dog comes out and breaks that law by running loose off a leash three times, then they're now considered a dangerous dog and have the restrictions of a dangerous dog that they have to follow under. But they have to be found guilty of allowing that dog to run loose three times. It could run loose all day, every day, and if it's never reported and never convicted, then we don't do that. By eliminating all of the vicious dogs in Newark that are vicious simply by the shape of their head or what somebody thinks might be a breed, which incidentally doesn't really ever, never really existed, but by eliminating all of those vicious dogs, that frees up our animal control officers time to, it frees up an immense amount of time so that he can actually address issues like the dog you have in your neighborhood that is menacing at worst and vicious at worst. So I think the ordinance is definitely for better. So, and then the last two things I had to say was Happy Birthday, Amber, wherever you are down there.
Autumn.
I do that all the time, though. Six years I've still called you Amber. Happy Birthday, Autumn, and Happy Easter to everybody else.